Good morning, everybody. We are live, so we'll get our meeting started. Clark Berger, if you will, please call the roll.
Master Combs? Master Berger? Master Peter?
Here.
Master Bakken? Judge Taylor?
Here. Before we do the prayer, I do want to let everybody know that Master Berger had a death in his family and had to be at the funeral today versus being on this call, so that's why he's not joining us today. So, our magistrate, Tom Bakken, is going to lead us in a word of prayer. Tom, if you will, just remember those that have lost loved ones, just in our community, not just Roger and his family, but all those. Appreciate that. Tom, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to pray, please. Dear most gracious heavenly father, first, we just want to say thank you for another day. Dear heavenly father, I just want to ask for mercy, dear heavenly father, for the ones that have lost loved ones for this horrible disease. Dear heavenly father, I know that it's touched everyone throughout the state and that, dear heavenly father, we just ask for your grace and mercy toward those families. We ask also that you would be with the magistrate Berger, dear heavenly father, and just lift him up and his family through this time and provide grace and comfort for them, dear heavenly father. I just ask now that you would give us the wisdom as we go over the county budget and give us the knowledge, dear heavenly father, to help us to make the right decisions to move our county forward. And dear heavenly father, I ask a special blessing that you will be with our service members all over the world who give us the opportunity to assemble in the greatest nation on the face of this earth. Heavenly fathers, these things that we ask and pray in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tom. If we will, Sheriff, lead us in a pledge. Everybody please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, first order of business, which really is the only order of business today, since this is a special call meeting. This is a budget workshop. At this time, I would like to thank all of our department heads and Glenna for their due diligence for another year of budget season. This one has been a little bit different than the ones in the past because all of our budget meetings were technically on Zoom and we were able to utilize technology to be able to still get our budget in and work on it and have inputs. So I appreciate all the department heads and Glenna for all their hard work in trying to prepare for some unforeseen times. And so I think you'll see that as we go through our budget today. Just like always, magistrates, if you have any kind of questions as we're going through, don't hesitate to sort of stop Glenna and ask those questions as we go through line item by line item. At this time, I will turn it over to Glenna and she can go through the budget line item by line item. Thank you, Glenna.
No problem. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. The first thing we're going to go over is I put a summary in the Dropbox this morning. It says 2021 budget summary on the top. It's just a one page. We'll start out there. As you look down the page on the first line-
Glenna, let's make sure that Larry, before we do the summary, let's make sure that Larry, Loretta's gotten the email before we do that. Hold on, even better, maybe Chris says he can even put that on the screen to where everybody can see it.
That would be great.
So, let's see if he can do that. Yep, that's it. Good job, Chris. Thank you. It's always good to have an IT guy right here in the room with you. We are six foot apart, though. I will let everybody know.
All right, so we're going to go by each fund. The first fund is the general fund. Right below it, you'll see it says less than $6 billion bond. We do have a $6 million bond for the AOC work that is in this year's budget that was not in last year's. I deducted that out to compare apples to apples. The 2021 budget for the general fund is $15,983,509. Our 1920 budget that we're working out of right now is $14,388,149. That's a difference of increase of $1,595,360, which you'll see when we go into the line items. We do have the insurance premium tax this year. We will be only be getting in three quarters of that, so that's the reason it's going to be budgeted at 1.8. Transfers in and out, this is transfers made between funds. The general fund makes transfers to the road fund and the jail fund. This year, the transfers increased by $448,551. And that is transferring out of the general fund. The next fund is the road fund. There was a bond in there for $1,228,000 for the trucks last year, so I removed that out to compare comparable budgets. The road fund, the 2021 budget, is $3,836,129. The 1920 we are currently in is $4,263,638. That's a budget difference of $427,509. Our 2021 budget is less by that amount, so we have cut down the road budget by $427,509. The transfers that are going from the general fund to the road fund have not changed. It's the same amount that we had to transfer last year. The reason for this, that that did not go down, is because we've lost revenues. County road aid because of gasoline tax and everything has gone down. So our transfers, even though our total budget's gone down, our transfers have remained the same because we're still having to pick up that slack where our other revenues have decreased. The jail fund is in this year's budget. We're going to have a $600,000 bond. I took that out and compared this year's coming year to the year we're presently in. The 2021 fiscal year is $4,325,034. The budget for the 1920 that we're currently in is $4,422,371. That is actually a decrease of $97,337. But our transfers to the jail fund from the general fund has actually increased $448,551. And that's because of loss of revenues in the jail fund. And we'll go through that line item by line item. The LGA fund, next year's budget is $800,500. This year's budget, 1920, is $640,500. We have a budget difference of an increase of $160,000. So we have not spent anything out of the LGA this year. We're just building it up. The CDBG fund, which is your CDBG grants, we currently have two grants. One is the God's Outreach Project. The other is the Kit Carson Commons Project. Combination of those two, in next year's budget, we have budgeted $721,475. This year's budget, we have $780,000. It's a decrease of $58,525. And basically, that's what we've spent here recently on the God's Outreach Project. And there is no transfers into the LGA or the CDBG fund. CSET fund, next year's budget, 2021, is $41,810,561. This year's budget that we're currently in, the 1920, is $49,85,474. That is a decrease from last year of $7,274,913. And basically, that's just due to them finishing up projects. This- And there is no transfers from the general fund into the CSET fund. The 911 fund, the 2021 budget, is $1,976,172. The 1920 that we're currently in is $2,234,745. That is a decrease of $258,573. That is a decrease for each entity, which is the county and the two cities. Each will have a decrease in the amount they transfer to the 911 fund of $52,192 decrease. Our health fund, the 2021 budget is $2,440,000. The 1920 was $2,080,000. That's a budget difference of an increase of $360,000. We continue to try to grow our health fund so that we're able to pay all the claims for being self-insured. Our total budget with all funds combined for 2021 is $71,893,380. Our 1920 budget was $77,894,877. So we've decreased right at $6,000, or six, I'm sorry, $6 million, which the biggest part of that was their CSET. Does anybody have any questions about this summary? If not, we'll go into the line items. The packets that I gave you, that is the comparison that has all the different fiscal years compared on it. We'll start off on page one of the general fund revenues. The real property taxes, we increased from $3.4 million to $3.6 million, just based on the numbers from prior years and what we expect to bring in. The tangible personal property taxes, we decreased from $280 to $275, based on what's coming in. Motor vehicle property tax, we increased from $550 to $575,000. Delinquent property tax, we decreased from $85,000 to $75,000, just based on what we're seeing come in right now. Bank franchises went from $225,000 to $245,000. Franchise corporation tax stayed, remained the same at $200,000. Occupational tax went from $3.4 million to $3,750,000. Now, one of the things that is different in this year's budget is because the federal, the IRS, has moved back the deadline for filing your taxes to July 15th instead of April 15th. So did our deadline for the net profit tax. So we normally bring in anywhere from $400,000 to $500,000 in net profit tax that would normally come in between April and June. Those are not due till July 15th, so we're going to be getting those into the next fiscal year, which means we're going to be getting two years of net profits in one year. However, there are lots of companies that are going ahead and filing, they're not taking the new deadline and they're going ahead and filing their net profits on April 15th. So we are getting some of our net profits in, but that's one reason for the increase in next year's budget. Transfer tax, we changed-
Glenna, real quick on that one, I just want to make sure everybody understands that when we do this next year's budget, then it's liable to be back down closer to back to the 3.4, 3.5, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The one-time, one-time increase.
Yep, thank you.
The D transfer tax, we changed from $350,000 to $375,000. And then we have our new tax, the insurance premium tax. We budgeted it at 1.8 million, based on, we're expected revenues of 2.5 and we were only going to receive three quarters into this new fiscal year. The insurance companies will start collecting that July 1, 2020. They will collect their first quarter from July 1, 2020 to September 30th of 2020. Those receipts will be due to us by October 31st, 2020. And then each quarter, they, they're due the month after the quarter ends. So we will collect three quarters of the four quarters in this next fiscal year, 2021. See if they have any questions about that. Okay, if not, excess fees for clerk remain the same at $525,000. Excess fees for share remain the same at $290,000. Abandoned property registrations, we decreased from $3,000 to $1,500 based on what we're currently bringing in. The board of adjustments and planning fees increased from $5,000 to $7,000. Plats increased from $17,000 to $18,000. HVC mechanical permits stayed the same at $45,000. Building permit fees increased from $110,000 to $120,000. Electrical inspections increased from $84,000 to $90,000. Cleaning fire gates and copies decreased from $1,000 down to $250. We, looking at the past years, we are not collecting very many on fire gates. We don't sell very many of those anymore, so we decreased that down. Telecommunications tax went from $70,400 to $72,000. Solid waste hauling permits went from $700 to $1,500. We do plan on doing an increase on the permit amount, so that's a reason for the increase there. Federal reimbursement is stayed at $50,000, and this is where the community liaison position, this is where we get reimbursed for it. Federal grants, last year it was zero, but we also, we usually get in a JAG grant each year. So we will expect to get a JAG grant in for $15,000. State grants stayed the same at $230,000, and those, just to give you an example, are like Hope Swings Grant, which is $100,000 a year, ASAP Grant, and the litter abatement grant, among other miscellaneous state grants. Homeland Security Grant, we have it at $100,000, and it is a WASH account. So we have a, we never know how many Homeland Security Grants we may get in. So we put $100,000 going, coming in and $100,000 going out. So if we only get $20,000 in Homeland Security Grants, we'll only spend out $20,000. So it is a wash. Election expense reimbursement stayed the same at $18,000. Board of Assessment and Appeals dropped from $1,000 to $500. Legal process tax stayed the same at $500. The AOC space rental dropped from $767,219 to $752,354, and that was a 2% cut on our courthouse usage that was done by KRS. Firefighters incentive pay remains the same at $145,163. DES federal reimbursement, which is the reimbursement we get for our EMA director, went from $35,000 to $30,000, just based on what we're bringing in. Skip down to refunds and contingency, it remained the same at $10,000. Animal control interlocal agreement went from $113,516 to $105,000. We have an interlocal agreement with Richmond that's for $75,000 and with Berea for $30,000. Fiscal court filing fees increased from $125,000 to $140,000. Then if you skip all the way down on page four, down to the golf course receipts, last year we had it budgeted $400,000. We're probably not going to meet that because of having to close for the month, but we dropped it down to $350,000 for the new fiscal year. Then you go down to dog adoptions. We left it at the same, $20,000. Cat adoptions, we increased from $1,200 to $3,500. Turn-in, we decreased from $600 to $500. Animal claiming fees, we increased from $1,500 to $2,000. Euthanasia fees, we decreased from $1,800 to $1,000. Dog tags, we increased from $1,200 to $2,000. Microchip fees, we left at $200. Donations, we increased from $1,500 to $2,000. Sales tax, we left at $1,800. And merchandise was a new line item we created for $200 where we're selling the shirts at the animal shelter. The Madison, then we get into the IT. Madison County IT Service, this is what different entities pay us for the IT service. Remained the same at $27,618. EMS IT remained the same at $10,500. Mass County Utilities, the same at $6,300. Clerk IT, the same at $22,000. PVA IT is the same at $7,350. Sheriff's Office IT is the same at $18,030. Detention Center IT is the same at $11,868. And we added Madison County Attorney IT Service at $8,710. Southern Madison Water IT Service remained the same at $7,000. E911 GIS Service remained the same at $5,000. Kirksville Water GIS Service remained the same at $500. Public Request GIS remained the same at $300. Then we get into pictometry. This is the fees that we get from different entities for the pictometry contract. The City of Berea remained the same at $11,126. PVA remained the same at $8,322. City of Richmond pictometry, same, $9,657. Berea College pictometry, $3,327. EKU pictometry remained the same at $3,861. Clerk's telephone service remained the same, $6480. County attorney, all the telephone services, down through the Mass County Attorney, the child support, driver's license, all remained the same, $3,600, $3,615,60. The Sheriff's Office Telephone Service remained the same at $5,400. Detention Center, some services were added, increased from $3,000 to $4,020. The Madison County Utilities Telephone remained the same at $3,150. And we go to the next page. We get down to dead animal removal fees. The only dead animal fee we charge is from businesses, which would be the vet's office or the stockyards. We decreased that from $2,000 down to $1,500 based on usage. Vending machine concessions remained the same at $500. Sales and surplus, we increased from $10,000 to $25,000. This past year, you'll notice that we sold $140,764. That's a little unusual. Normally, it's been in the past two years before that, $28,000, $26,000. We always have equipment that we surplus throughout the year. But for this year, we sold a couple of dump trucks and some equipment for some large amounts of money that made it to $140,000. Kentucky Real Estate Board, the rent stays the same at $28,000.
Glenna, Glenna, go ahead and tell how we sell those too. I think, you know, a lot of times, communities used to, you know, actually having like a surplus auction, and we don't do that anymore. We sell them actually on GovDeals, which is an online auction. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We do no longer have the in-person surplus auctions that we used to at the road department. GovDeals works so much easier, so much better, and we can do it as we gather stuff. We don't have to gather it all up and do it at one time. As we have stuff that need to be surplus, we can do it throughout the year, and we get, I believe, better pricing. We get better money back for our surplus.
Yeah, and you get a bigger, you get a bigger audience too. And anybody can get on there and bid on those items, and they can be items from anywhere across the country, I would assume, correct?
Yes, you can get on, if anyone's interested, you can get on GovDeals.com and you can see surplus from all over the state, all over the country, and you can bid on them.
Thank you.
No problem. The rent for the real estate board, like I said, stayed the same for $28,801. We no longer have rent on the Battlefield Ranch House. Madison County Child Support, the rent stayed the same at $43,164. The Battlefield Farm rent stayed the same at $14,100. Commonwealth Attorney rent stayed the same at $32,088. Family Court Basement, over in the new Family Court Building, we did lose our renter on that, so that's dropped zero unless we pick up another renter. If we do, we'll add it in the budget at that time. The cost of rent remains the same at $6,000. Recycling receipts dropped from $10,000 down to $4,000 based on recycling receipts that we've received throughout this year. Insurance reimbursement, we raised from $40,000 to $50,000, and this is just reimbursement from our insurance company for different accidents that we've had. Sheriff vehicle insurance reimbursement, we remained at $25,000. You will see that it was $140,000 this year is how much we brought in. That's because we had three totaled vehicles. Reimbursement from outside entities increased from $50,000 to $200,000. The items that come in in this line item would be reimbursement from 911 and CSET for all their insurances and their administrative costs for the finance office paying their bills and doing their payroll, plus any other kind of miscellaneous reimbursements that we get throughout the year. We have, it's only at $55,000 currently, but we have not gotten in the 911 and CSET for this year, which will jump it up tremendously. Sheriff Law Enforcement Liability Insurance increased from $45,000 to $49,800. That is on our CAF policy from CAECO, and that comes directly off that policy, that number. Sheriff Auto Insurance Reimbursement increased from $48,894 to $60,117. That number is given to us directly from CAECO. Donations remain the same for $7,500. You will notice that we had $23,900 come in in 1920, but actually, the Madison County Conservation District gave us, they did not give us, if you look the year before that, in 1819, the full amount, so they have given us two years amounts in the 1920 year. Cell tower rent increased from $33,000 to $36,000. That's based on what receipts we have coming in. Air interest is dropped from $75,000 to $70,000. Surplus from prior year, we dropped from $5,500,000. This is what is setting in your checking account on June 30th. We dropped it down $500,000 to $5 million, mainly because we're not going to be getting those, most of those net profits in in between April and June, so that's going to drop our, what balances in our account. Bond anticipation note, we will be doing, currently are working on the bond of $6 million that's for the ALC renovations. And you'll see that in the expenditures going out. It's going to be a wash, does not count the cost of the county anything. And transfers to other funds, we will be transferring out of the general fund a total of $3,905,435. That is an increase from the previous year of $448,551. We have a total, general fund-
Glenna, read that again. What did you say there?
Three million, the $3,905,435 that's going out of the general fund is an increase of $448,551.
Okay, thank you.
Fund budget for the general fund is $21,983,509, which $6 million of that is that bond anticipation. Does anybody have any questions about the general fund revenues? Okay, if not, we'll move into the appropriations for the general fund. Starting off with the county judge's executive salary, that is set by the state and that is given at January 1 of each year. The county judge, and as we go through all these line items, there were no, there is no pay increases, salary increases for anyone in the county. So even though the budget may have changed from the previous year, that is based on, if someone has left, the new budget is based on who is in those positions at this time and what their current pay rate is. So that could, can differ some, because if we had someone who's been here for 25 years, 20 years, and they're making a certain amount, they leave, we replace them with the entry level, and that's going to affect the budget. So the county judge executive office staff went from $118,000 to $533,000 to $123,536, and that is, we have had some changes in some of the office staff. The judge training incentive, which is set by DLG on the amount, is the amount that's given when they finish their 40 hours. This is given to all elected officials. The judge's office fuel, and that was for $4,312 is the amount this year. Judge's office fuel is the same at $500. Reimbursements went from $500 to $200. Training to travel remained the same at $2,500. Vehicle repairs remained the same at $500. The county attorney's salary went from $50,364 to $53,312, and that is based on when I, when I have to do- And that is based on when I, when I have to do the Judge's Salary, the County Attorney's Salary, and the Jailor's Salary, those are all set by the state. They are given on January one. Um, when I budget, though, those are set until next January. I have to make a guesstimate at what increase they will receive next January. I based it on two percent, because that's been the going approximate rate for the last few years. So, half of this fiscal year, they're paid at the rate they're paid at right now. The next six months, they're paid at whatever rate they give them as of January one. So, um, and hers is, is the County Attorney's, is set by the state and is given in January. Um, the next one, you're gonna see Administrator of Diversion Program. This, in this line item, it is the um, Salary, the Gross Salary, which is thirty five thousand plus Benefits. So this is not, uh, it's an increase, um, it was budgeted at thirty five thousand last year. But we don't do their payroll, so I, I have to have their benefits in the same line item as their salary. Where everybody else's salary that's in here that we do payroll for. Their line item is their gross salary, all the benefits go under a, a ninety four hundred line item at the end of the budget. But for the uh, Administrator of Diversion Program, it's a gross salary of thirty five thousand plus Benefits, which is forty six thousand two hundred. The Assistant County Attorney is the same way, it's the gross salary of forty thousand, which is no increase from last year, plus the Benefits, fifty two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. The Rocket Docket Program stayed the same at fifty thousand. Secretary to Court, um, is remaining the same at twelve hundred. Fees Paid Certified Deeds stayed the same at five hundred. Delinquent Tax Advertising, same at six thousand. Auto Boat Tax Bill Preparation, the same at thirteen, thirteen thousand five hundred. Sheriff, Sheriff Program Support, uh, decreased from one million five hundred and fifty nine thousand one forty seven to one million two hundred and fifty four thousand one sixty three. That's a decrease of three hundred and four thousand nine hundred and eighty four dollars. The Property Tax Bill Preparation remained the same at eleven thousand five hundred. Sheriff's Office Postage remained the same at eleven thousand. Coroner Salary remained the same at fifty thousand nine fifty. Deputy Coroner's remained the same at thirty five thousand one sixty seven. Coroner Expense Allowance is the same at thirty six hundred. Autopsy and Attendance, uh, Services remained the same at three thousand. Coroner Fuel increased from two thousand uh, to twenty five hundred. Office Supplies, uh, remained the same at three hundred. Coroner Supplies remained the same at four thousand. Training, Coroner Training remained the same at two thousand. Coroner Building Repairs remained the same at five hundred. Coroner Electric remained the same at six thousand. Vehicle Repairs were same, remain the same at a thousand. Coroner Equipment remained the same at twenty five hundred. And then we go down to the Magistrate Salaries, the Magistrate Salaries all remain the same at thirty thousand two thirty five. The Magistrates' Expense Allowance remained the same, fourteen thousand four hundred. Magistrates' Training Incentive, uh, went from seventeen thousand two sixty four to seventeen thousand two forty nine. Uh, that is just based on the exact amount that D L G sets.
Hey, Glenna. Can we let everybody know too, that the expense allowance, that fourteen thousand four hundred, that's a split?
Yes, I'm sorry, that is a split, the expense allowance and the training incentive is a split between four magistrates. So it, the expense allowance is thirty six hundred a piece. And the other one, uh, the Training Incentive is, um, four thousand three hundred and twelve dollars a piece. Advertising and Legal Notices remained the same at seven thousand. Grant Consulting Contract remained the same at thirty five thousand. Contracted Engineering Services, um, we increased from two thousand to ten thousand. Um, each year, we seem to have some type of engineering services going on throughout the year. The Lease Payments is, um, our tower out on Big Hill and the Kirksville Community Center. Those two lease payments combined to make this lease payment line item, total is twenty three thousand six twenty four. The nine one one County Support went from two hundred and forty eight thousand one sixty five down to one hundred and ninety five thousand three oh eight, that's a decrease of fifty two thousand eight hundred and fifty seven dollars. The Community Liaison Contract remained the same at fifty thousand. The Supplies for Each Magistrate, which is listed out, um, remain the same at two fifty. Registrations and Licensing remained the same at two hundred dollars. Special, Special Projects for the Fiscal Court, uh, remain the same at ten thousand. You will see where it says.
Glenna, that didn't, that didn't remain the same, just FYI.
Uh, it actually did.
Oh, okay.
This comparison chart, if you transfer money out of a line item, it's gonna decrease that line item down. So as we go through here, there are gonna be some that's been decreased down, because we've transferred money out of it to another line item this year.
Okay.
But I'll put back and make notes of what the original budget was. So the original budget was ten thousand, we've already taken two thousand out of it, moved it to another line item we needed to do.
Okay, thank you, I, it just didn't show it on our sheet, so I just didn't, will make sure that you.
Yes.
Didn't misspeak, thanks.
Uh, Magistrate, the Training and Travel for each one remained the same at fifteen hundred. The P V A Statutory Contribution remained the same at one hundred and seventy six thousand eight hundred, which is set by the state. The Board of Assessment Appeals remained the same at twelve hundred. Crowning Treasurer's Salary remained the same, seventy five thousand four fifty two. Finance Office Staff remained the same at a hundred and five thousand. Postage Machine Lease, uh, increased from twenty five hundred to three thousand. The Shredding Service, uh, remained the same for three hundred and fifty dollars. Checks W two forms and deposit slips increased from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred. Um. Finance Third Floor Office Supplies increased from four thousand to five thousand based on usage. Finance Office Postage decreased from six thousand down to five thousand. Finance Third Floor Printed Materials remained the same at five hundred. Finance Office Training and Travel, it actually remained the same at twenty five hundred, we had transferred a thousand dollars out of there to another line item already. So, but it was twenty five hundred, and it remained twenty, remains twenty five hundred. Uh, Human Resource, uh, Staff, we've got at twenty seven thousand three hundred, that's a new, new, uh, line item. Human Resource Director remained the same at fifty two thousand four thirty five. Employment Testing, uh, remained the same at twenty thousand. H R Safety Implementation decreased from fifteen thousand to five thousand. Human Resources Training and Travel remained the same at twenty five hundred. Employee Training's same at twelve hundred. Occupational Tax Refunds, um, you will see, it remained the same at eighty thousand, but as you can see, in nineteen twenty, we had to uh, transfer enough in there to pay a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars, it's been paid out so far. The big, uh, cost in that was Oak and I had actually sent us in a double payment, uh, by mistake. And so they sent us in sixty seven thousand nine hundred and eighty five dollars twice. We had to turn around and refund that back, one of them back. So that was the big increase for, for this year, so it will remain the same at eighty thousand. Fee to Circuit Clerk Law Library remains the same at twelve hundred. Election Board Commissioners, same at six thousand. Election Officers, uh, we dropped down from seventy two thousand to forty five thousand, and that's due to the elections this year. There should be, only be one election, uh, Kenny gives us those numbers. Election Advertising from forty six hundred down to four thousand. Election Equipment Valence and Maintenance from sixty six thousand down to fifty one thousand three sixty. Election Office Expenses from sixteen thousand down to twelve thousand four hundred. And then we move into the Janitorial. The Janitorial Personnel, uh, decreased from one sixty five, one hundred and sixty five thousand seven eighty down to a hundred and sixty thousand. Custodial Overtime stayed, remained the same at five hundred, even though it says twelve hundred there, we had to, we had some uh, circumstances that required some overtime this year, uh, we don't foresee that next year, so it's gonna remain the same at five hundred. Courthouse Dumpster Service, uh, increased from twenty five, two thousand five hundred and fifty to two thousand seven hundred and fifty. Courthouse Custodial Supplies remained the se- same at fifty five hundred. Custodial Fuel decreased from fifteen hundred to a thousand. Custodial Uniforms the same at five hundred. Courthouse Decor the same at a thousand. Courthouse Repairs dropped from twenty six thousand to twenty four thousand. Custodial Travel Reimbursement remained the same at a hundred. Courthouse Water Sewer dropped from seven thousand to four thousand, and uh, that was due to a billing issue that we got resolved. Um, we, we do not anticipate that it will be over four thousand next year. Courthouse Electric remained the same at thirty eight thousand. Courthouse Natural Gas dropped from six thousand to five thousand. Custodial Vehicle Repair remained the same at a thousand. Custodial Equipment remained the same at a thousand. Family Court Custodial Supplies dropped from three thousand to twenty five hundred. Family Court Repairs dropped from six thousand to five thousand. Family Court Water and Sewer remained the same at a thousand. Family Court Electric increased from forty eight thousand to fifty three thousand based on usage. Family Court Gas, uh, decreased from fifteen hundred down to seven fifty. First Street Annex Custodial Supplies remained the same at three hundred. Madison Avenue Custodial Supplies, same at two fifty. County Parks, the same at five hundred. Road Department North Custodials, same at four fifty. South Road Department at three hundred. Fire Custodial Supplies remained the same at four hundred. First Street Annex Repairs dropped from ten thousand to nine thousand. Madison Avenue Repairs, uh, dropped from twelve hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand. County Parks Repairs, uh, it was at eighty two hundred, we have to transfer some in, we had a unit, an A C unit go out at the Visitor Center that was almost four thousand. So I do believe we'll still be okay with eighty two hundred for next year. Uh, First Street Annex Water Sewer dropped from a thousand fifty to seven hundred and fifty. We had a leak, and it's been fixed, uh, Madison Avenue Water, uh, Sewer remained the same at seven fifty. First Street Annex Electric increased from sixteen thousand five hundred to nineteen thousand based on usage. Madison Avenue Electric remained the same at eight thousand. First Street Annex Natural Gas dropped from three thousand to twenty five hundred. Courthouse Annex Custodial Supplies remained the same at five thousand. Courthouse Annex Repairs dropped from thirty four thousand to thirty thousand. Courthouse Annex Water Sewer dropped from ninety six hundred to nine thousand. Courthouse Annex Electric remained the same at seventy eight thousand. Then we get into the I T Department. I T Tech Staff, uh, increased from two hundred eight thousand nine eighty eight to two hundred nine thousand five hundred. System Software Maintenance, uh, decreased from twenty eight thousand to twenty seven thousand nine hundred. I T Department Expenses decreased from ten thousand two hundred and forty to two thousand eight oh three. Animal Shelter Expenses, um, we changed the name on it. If you'll see on the next page, it says Environmental Expenses was nine thousand nine fifty eight last year. It's now gonna be called Animal Shelter Expenses, because we no longer combine those two at three thousand one hundred and fifty four dollars. Finance Expenses for I T, um, went from seven thousand three thirty seven down to six thousand three ninety nine. Fire Department Expenses went from twenty three thousand one forty to twenty two thousand two seventy eight. Planning Expenses went from five thousand thirty nine dollars to five thousand six fifty four. Road Department Expenses went from twenty six thousand four forty three to twenty two thousand four sixty two. Um. We've got Golf and Park Expenses, as you can see on the next page, it was just Golf Expenses for thirteen thousand two twenty five. Those two Departments are combined now, it is eleven thousand five sixty eight. H R Expenses went from five thousand five hundred and ten dollars to one thousand one hundred and thirty one. Jail Expenses went from twenty nine thousand fifty five dollars down to sixteen thousand one sixty four. Judge's Office Expenses went from two thousand thirty nine dollars to two thousand one twenty four. Facility Expenses went from two thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars to two thousand six hundred and five. Coroner Expenses went from twelve hundred and thirty six dollars to eight eighty nine. Nine one one Expenses went from twelve thousand seven hundred and forty two dollars to thirteen thousand two seventy. Clerk Expenses went from tw- two thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars to nine hundred and eighty five. County Attorney Expenses went from one thousand eight hundred and thirty one down to two hundred and eighty dollars. Sheriff Expenses went from five thousand six hundred and ninety seven dollars down to one thousand three hundred and fifty seven. Copier Maintenance, uh, went from twenty three hundred to twenty six hundred. And then you'll skip down to the bottom of the next page. Pictometry Contractual Services remained the same at forty four thousand eight hundred. I T Fuel dropped from a thousand to five hundred. I T, uh, Access Channel Supplies and Maintenance went from two hundred and fifty to twenty thousand two hundred and fifty. And the reason for this increase is with the, um, renovation of the Courthouse, we're likely, we're gonna have to move, um, the courtroom over there. And we may have to set up a new access channel, and it's gonna co- cost some money for that setup and the equipment. Uh, the County Telephone System went from twenty nine thousand down to twenty seven thousand. The County Wireless Telephone System, uh, went from twenty thousand, or remained the same at twenty thousand. I T Training and Travel for the Director went from four thousand one fifty five to two thousand three seventy five. Training and Travel for System Admin went from four thousand thirty to two thousand two fifty. Uh, the G I S, G I S Coordinator went from nine hundred and twenty dollars to nine hundred and fifty five dollars. And the County Internet System, uh, went from twenty two thousand one hundred and twelve to twenty three thousand six hundred and four. Go all the way down to the page eighteen at the bottom, I T Vehicle Repairs, uh, dropped from nine hundred down to five hundred. System Hardware Maintenance, uh, went from eighty two thousand to a hundred and nine thousand. And, uh, as Chris explained to us when we were going through our budget meeting, uh, we have some new equipment that needs to be purchased, uh, some of our virtual computers and stuff are getting outdated. The Storage Maintenance went from twenty six hundred to forty nine hundred. And that sums up the I T Department. Then we get into the bottom of page nineteen, Juvenile Housing and Medical, we dropped from twenty five thousand to fifteen thousand. And this is where if, uh, the Courts Order a Juvenile, um, normally they have sent them to, uh, the Lexington Juvenile Facility or to a place in Mount Sterling. Uh, we don't have hardly anybody going anymore, the Courts have changed their system, I think they're doing more diversion, so we were able to decrease that line up. Planning and Development Staff decreased from two hundred and twenty thousand one forty two to a hundred and ninety two thousand. Board of Adjustments decreased from six thousand to five thousand. Planning Commission decreased from sixteen thousand to fourteen thousand. Planning Develop, Legal Notices remained the same at twenty five hundred. The Comprehensive Plan Development, this is something we have to do every five years. Uh, we only had three thousand in last year, but this, this plan is coming up to be, uh, due. Uh, we have put fifty thousand in for the development of the Comprehensive Plan. Planning and Development Legal Notices are legal services, um, which is contracted for them to attend the meetings, it remains the same at ten thousand. Electrical Inspections Contract remained the same at sixty thousand. Property Codes Violations remained the same at two thousand. Planning Gasoline dropped from six thousand to five thousand. P and D Equipment Supplies remained the same at a thousand. Signs, uh, increased from five hundred to a thousand. P and D Reimbursements decreased from two thousand down to a thousand. Training and Travel for the Planning Department, uh, went from fifty six hundred down to five thousand. Subdivision Security Lots remained the same at twelve thousand. Planning Vehicle Repairs went from thirty nine hundred down to three thousand. Fire Department Staff, uh, went from eight hundred eighty six thousand five hundred and fifty one dollars down to eight hundred and sixty six thousand even. Firefighters' Incentive Pay remained the same at a hundred and four thousand. Equipment Annual Testing remained the same at four thousand. Fire Department Supplies remained the same at seven thousand. Fire Gasoline and Oil decreased from thirty five thousand down to twenty six thousand. Fire Specific Equipment decreased from thirty thousand to twenty five thousand. Fire P P, P P E Equipment remained the same at twenty five thousand. Uniforms decreased from seventeen to fifteen thousand. Berea Fire Department, air interlocal agreement, um, went from thirty eight thousand to sixty eight thousand. Kirksville Volunteer Fire Department remained the same at sixteen thousand. Waco, Whitehall, Union City, all remained the same at sixteen thousand.
Hey, Glenna.
Yes.
Can you tell us, uh, on the Berea Fire Department, what that, what you think that increases of the thirty thousand?
Uh, Judge could probably, uh, address that better, but it's, we had renegotiated the interlocal agreement, Judge, do you wanna speak on that?
Yeah, they just, they needed an increase, uh, I don't think that, uh, from years past, that, uh, uh, the county was ultimately paying what sort of the original agreement was, I think. Um, and so Mayor Fraley and I worked out where we're supplying them, um, the Animal Control Service Agreement with the Fire Service Agreement. Um, it, it increased on the fire side.
Hey, um, also Judge, the, uh, Comprehensive Plan Development, I know we're a little past that, but is that a, uh, is that cost increase, is that a body to do that?
It, it, it is not, right now, uh, it would not be, we would have some type of consulting firm that would come in and work with us on that. We, we just had to sort of estimate. We don't have any actual bids yet back on that. We're, we're, Burt's in the process right now of reaching out to several different firms where we could actually interview those and find one that we felt like met our needs and suited us.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the Berea Rescue Squad, remained the same at eighty-five hundred. Red Look Volunteer Fire Department remained the same at sixteen thousand. Fire Building Repairs went from seven thousand to ten thousand. I think we have some projects at Station Two that need doing. Fire Training and Travel dropped from nine thousand to six thousand. Fire Department Number Two Water and Sewer remained the same fifteen hundred. Water and Sewer Number One remained the same at seven fifty. Electric Number Two went from eight thousand to nine thousand. Electric Number One went from eleven thousand five hundred to thirteen thousand five hundred. Number Two Natural Gas stayed the same at three thousand. Number One stayed the same, Natural Gas fifteen hundred. Vehicle Repair and Maintenance same at thirty thousand. Fire Communications Equipment dropped from fifteen hundred to a thousand. Fire Rescue Equipment, this past year we have fifty thousand budgeted, we've only spent fifteen, but we have some orders out that we just haven't paid yet, we will spend that in this year. But we did drop it down to twenty-five thousand for the twenty-twenty-one year. There is a few more pieces of equipment that the Fire Department needs for rescue. Then you go down to the Mass County Rescue Squad Water and Sewer. We reduced that line item. It is no longer in there. And also the Mass County Rescue Squad Electric is no longer in the budget. EMA Staff remained the same at seventy-one thousand five eighty-five. Program Advertisers same at a hundred and fifty. Threat Net Weather Service the same at eighteen hundred. Hazmat Supplies the same at two thousand. EMA Gasoline the same at a thousand. EMA Vehicle Repair same at a thousand. Office Supplies EMA same at six hundred. We did add in a line item this year for COVID-nineteen Supplies and Equipment. We put two thousand in there, we've only spent three hundred and seventy-four dollars. We do have that line item in there at zero. If we need to purchase stuff in the next year, we will transfer in there. EMA Uniforms dropped from four thousand down to seven hundred. The Registration Conferences and Training for EMA went from a thousand to two thousand. And then we go down to the Homeland Security Grants, which I mentioned earlier was a wash. We have a hundred thousand coming in and a hundred thousand going out, that's the going out line item. Then if you go all the way to the bottom of page twenty-six, we have the Ambulance Grant remained the same at ten thousand. Forest Fire Suppression remained the same at eighteen hundred. Then we get into the Animal Shelter. And the line item there, last year it was Dog Ward and Solid Waste Director, which was two departments combined, was fifty-seven thousand two fifty-eight. This year it is Dog Ward and Animal Care Coordinator at thirty-six thousand seventy-five dollars, where we split those two departments out. The Animal Shelter Staff went from a hundred and six thousand nine forty-two to a hundred and seventeen thousand one eighty-one. Animal Shelter Overtime went from three thousand to five thousand. Animal Medical Supplies went from five thousand to sixty-five hundred. Animal Shelter Food and Supplies went from thirty-five hundred to thirty-seven hundred. Microchips for Animals remained the same at five thousand. Gasoline remained the same at five thousand. And Vehicle Repairs remained the same at forty-five hundred. Office Supplies decreased from two thousand down to a thousand. Animal Shelter Operational Supplies increased from five hundred to fifteen hundred. Animal Shelter Uniforms decreased from eighteen hundred down to fifteen hundred. Animal Shelter Repairs, we have, it was actually at sixteen hundred this year. We've spent nineteen thousand and eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. We've been, we've had some plumbing repairs, projects, some gutters. We bought two freezers. We've had gate repairs, a steel door, and we've had AC repair out there so far this year. There are some other scheduled repairs that we have in mind for the next year and we put fifteen thousand and we do think fifteen thousand will cover those repairs. Animal Shelter Training and Travel remained the same at fifteen hundred. Water and Sewer remained the same at five hundred. Electric increased from eleven-five to fourteen thousand. Animal Shelter Natural Gas remained the same at two thousand. Animal Shelter Mowing remained the same at fifteen hundred. And Animal Shelter Equipment Repairs remained the same at a thousand. Animal Shelter Vehicle, we had thirty thousand in this year's budget and we are not going to have that line item in next year's budget. Animal Shelter Spay and Neuter Program remained the same at fifteen thousand. And now we enter into the Solid Waste Department. Solid Waste Staff went from a hundred and fifty-nine thousand one eighty-six down to a hundred and ten thousand one hundred. Solid Waste Overtime remained the same at five thousand. The Litter Abatement Program was at sixty-three thousand last year, it's sixty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. That is the state grant, we get it in under state grants and spend it out under this line item. Solid Waste Contracting Services, we actually combined two line items on this. If you look down a couple line items to Solid Waste Dumpsters, we eliminated that line item. We combined it with the Solid Waste Contracting Services, so we increased from thirty-eight thousand to fifty-eight thousand. Just makes it simpler on a, on our billings. Hazardous Waste, we increased from sixteen thousand to twenty thousand. And that is an actual grant that we get in and we've applied for. Illegal Dumps, we kept the same at a thousand. Solid Waste Fuel decreased from thirty-six thousand down to twenty-five thousand. Solid Waste Vehicle Repairs remains the same at thirty thousand. Dead Animal Removal Supplies remain the same at twelve fifty. Solid Waste Operational Supplies remain the same at fifteen hundred. Solid Waste Uniforms the same at fifteen hundred. Solid Waste Contribution Fee, that was a fee that we paid to Halfway House for, they would, just as support for giving us inmates, we no longer use that, we're using our own inmates. We eliminated that line item. Solid Waste Reimbursement the same at two fifty. Solid Waste Training and Travel decreased from a thousand to five hundred. Safety City Supplies the same at eight hundred. Safety City Repair is the same at a thousand. Safety City Water Sewer the same at eight hundred. Safety City Electric the same at twenty-five hundred. Soil Conservation Support Salary, this is our annual contribution to the Soil Conservation District and it's seventy-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight, same as last year. Court Ordered Legal Psychological remained the same at forty thousand. That's where we receive the court system for indigents, where we have to pay about psychological evaluations or for legal services. General Welfare Burial Assistance, it was at two thousand this year. We've spent twenty-one hundred, we increased it to twenty-five hundred. And that's where if we have an indigent that has, that Jimmy ends up with in the Coroner's Office that we have no family, we do help out with the cremation. Airport Board remained the same at twenty-five thousand. Kentucky River Foothills Transport same at forty-four thousand. Kentucky ASAP Grant fifty thousand four hundred and seven to fifty-six thousand seven eighty-five. That is the current grant they're getting this, that for the twenty-twenty-one year plus carryover. Harm Reduction Grant is at twenty thousand. Richmond Senior Citizen and Berea Senior Citizens remain the same at ten thousand. The Hope Swings Health and Family Grant remained the same at a hundred thousand. County Park Staff went from forty-two thousand four sixty-five to forty thousand eight ninety-two. And one of the reasons some of these salary line items decreased is this current fiscal year that we're in had twenty-seven payrolls in it. That only happens like every twelve to fifteen years. Since I've been here for twenty years, it's only happened once. It'll be another twelve or so years before it happens again. So everybody still makes the same amount of money, but I have to budget more when we have twenty-seven payrolls that fall in a year. Battlefield Park Dumpster Service remained the same at twelve hundred. Will Green Park Dumpster Service went from five hundred to four hundred. County Parks Vehicle Repairs went from seven fifty to five hundred. Office Supplies stayed the same at three hundred. Battlefield Historical Park Special Events remained the same at two thousand. Hernan Ranch House Utilities went from twelve hundred to four hundred. Battlefield Visitor Center Water Sewer went from five hundred to four hundred. Battlefield Park Water Sewer stayed the same at nine hundred. Whitehall same at fourteen hundred. Union City Water Sewer same at seven hundred. Will Green Lake Marina Water Sewer went from fifteen hundred down to twelve hundred. Battlefield Visitor Center Electric remained the same at four thousand. Battlefield Park Electric same at fifty-five hundred. Whitehall Heart same two thousand. Union City Park same one thousand. Kirksville Park Electric same seven fifty. Will Green Lake Marina Electric dropped, went from eleven hundred to fourteen hundred. Battlefield Visitor Center Natural Gas went from a thousand down to nine hundred. Battlefield Park Natural Gas same at five hundred. County Parks Mowing remained the same at twenty thousand. And now we get into the Golf Course. The Pro Shop Staff went from a hundred and ten thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. And that's just based on the needs of the golf course and the personnel, that's not raises. Golf Course Advertising Handicap Fees is two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars down to fourteen hundred dollars. Pro Shop Custodial Supplies same at eleven hundred. Pro Shop Food for Resale dropped from twelve thousand to ten thousand. Pro Shop Merchandise dropped from ten thousand to eight thousand. And it does say six thousand there, that's because we transferred money out. Pro Shop Office Supplies remain the same at a thousand. Pro Shop Repairs and Pest Control went from two thousand down to fifteen hundred. The Golf Course Maintenance Staff remained the same at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Golf Cart Lease went from thirty-three thousand two twenty-two down to thirty-one thousand six hundred. The Maintenance Equipment Lease went from sixty, is sixty-two thousand seven fifty down to fifty-seven thousand. Golf Course Dumpster Service remained the same at sixteen hundred and eighty dollars. The Maintenance Barn Supplies same at four thousand. Chemicals, Fertilizer, Seed and Sand went from, it actually was forty-eight thousand in this last year's budget. We had transferred a little bit out, making it forty-seven. It is going down to forty-five thousand. Golf Course Gasoline went from twenty-two thousand down to twenty. Golf Course Aerification remained the same at eleven thousand. Golf Course Equipment Maintenance and Repairs went from ten thousand down to eight thousand. Golf Course Irrigation Maintenance, we, it was at five thousand, it remains at five thousand. We've spent thirteen thousand four hundred and seven, but that's where we charged the water problems that we, the drainage problems we were having at the golf course. That's the line item we charged it to. So that's, that was the reason for the one-time increase in this year's budget. It remains at five thousand. Golf Course Sales and Usage Tax eighteen thousand, remains the same. Training and Travel same five hundred. Golf Course Water Sewer forty-two hundred down to four thousand. Of course Electric thirteen thousand up to thirteen thousand five hundred. Natural Gas remained the same at two thousand. Go down to Valley View Ferry Authority remained the same at twenty thousand. Then we get into our Bond Payments, these are all taken off the schedules. The two thousand seventeen series bond principal payment went from three hundred and fifteen thousand to three thirty. The two thousand seventeen series bonds interest payment went from two hundred and twenty thousand two hundred down to two hundred and four thousand four fifty. The two thousand twelve series principal went from four hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and sixty thousand. The two hundred and twelve series bond interest went from a hundred and seventy-two thousand six seventy-five down to a hundred and sixty-three thousand six sixty-five. The CAKO Fire Truck Lease Principal went from thirty-nine thousand one forty-eight to forty thousand two twenty. The CAKO Election Equipment Lease Principal went from forty-five thousand eight seventy-four to forty-seven thousand five sixty-eight. The CAKO Truck Lease Interest went from eleven thousand two hundred and eleven dollars down to nine thousand nine eighty-one. The CAKO Election Equipment Lease Interest went from thirteen thousand nine oh five down to twelve thousand fifty-three. The next one is Administrative Building, we no longer have that line item. That was purchased. The Courthouse ALC Renovation, we had input that this year and have transferred sixty-eight thousand into it. We have the bond that we're taking out for six million, five million of it goes in this line item for Courthouse ALC renovation. If you look down a few line items, you'll see Chase Building Renovation, the other one million goes into that lineup. And then we have in the middle, the Courthouse Annex renovation, which is the renovation downstairs of Courthouse Annex for Kenny's office to move over from the courthouse to the Annex is at two hundred thousand added for this year. Purchase New Property on the next page remains the same at fifty thousand. Capital Project Equipment remains the same at fifty thousand. I know it does say thirty-four thousand three hundred, we have transferred money out of that line item to other lineups. Auditing Services increased from forty thousand to sixty thousand. The reason for this is, this is our fifth year. Actually every four years, the State Auditor's Office, their policy inside their administration wants to do our audit personally by them every four years. Last year they were so far behind, they sent us a letter and told us we could do CPA one more year. We did, we paid thirty-five thousand nine hundred and ten for the audit. The state costs much, much more when they come in and do the audit. They will be coming in and doing the audit this next year. So we've had to increase it to sixty thousand. The Insurance Property Liability Fleet, this increased from five hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars to five hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The Insurance Claims, it was actually at forty thousand last year. We have spent a hundred and fifty-eight thousand six fifty-six. That was, we had three sheriff vehicles that were totaled that all three together cost a hundred and one thousand to replace. That was paid through insurance and it was, the vehicles were bought out of this line item. It also included one CSEP Siren that was destroyed and replaced for thirty-four thousand. We have, it's a wash account, you remember on the revenue side, we had fifty thousand coming in, we have fifty thousand going out. Public Officials Bonds remained the same at five thousand. Dues remained the same at twenty-one thousand. Reserve for Transfer increased, it was actually, the original budget was two million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. As you see now, it's one million eighty-nine thousand six seventy-two. That's where we have transferred out of that line item to other lineups. This next year it will be four million three hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-six. That's an increase of one million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. And that is mainly due to our new insurance tax. And we have to wait to make sure how this, this insurance premium tax is going to be received and how much we're going to bring in. So we have not budgeted the majority of that money back out. We are just putting it in reserve to make sure that it comes in accurately.
Glenna, will you, will you do read that off again?
Yes. So last year's budget, the nineteen-twenty, in reserve for transfer, we had two million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars budgeted. This year we have four million three forty-one two seventy-six, that's an increase of one million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars.
Thank you.
Glenna, those transfers will be for the Sheriff's Department and Jail and for the Pension Fund, is that where the transfers go to?
Those transfers are just anything throughout the year that we, that we had to transfer within the general fund. That's not going to the, to the jail fund. That's transfers into other line items.
Okay, thank you.
Social Security Match went from a hundred and ninety-one thousand two forty-one down to one eighty-five five forty-three. The Retirement was supposed to increase by approximately two and a half percent. But there was a bill passed just during this last session that kept the retirement rate at the same amount it is this year, which is twenty-four point oh six percent for non-hazardous and thirty-nine point five eight percent for hazardous. So those will remain the same, we won't see an increase in this year. Actually because of the twenty-seven payrolls that I had to budget in last year, we will see a decrease from eight hundred and seventy-one thousand three thirty-three down to eight hundred and forty-three thousand one thirty-one. As you can see, last year I had to increase it significantly because of that twenty-seven payrolls. Life Insurance went from five thousand down to forty-five hundred. Employee Health Insurance went from four hundred and forty-two thousand to four hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred. Unemployment Compensation Insurance went from thirty-four thousand four seventy-five down to twenty-seven thousand six ninety-six. That is with through CAKO. CAKO's Worker Comp went from two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-two down to two hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and twelve. Medicare Match went from forty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-six down to forty-three thousand three ninety-three. That sums up the general fund, does anybody have any questions about the general fund? That sums up the general fund, does anybody have any questions about the general fund? Okay, if you flip to the next page, we start the Road Fund. First line item is Road Federal Reimbursement, this is for our FEMA disaster DR four-four-two-eight which was the flooding. Uh this is um Arbuckle, Willer Branch and Hagan's Mill, some of the FEMA repairs. Um we will air portion of it um that we spend out of our line item and then get reimbursed is three hundred and forty-six thousand two ninety-six.
Hey Glenn, you might announce too that these first ones, that these are all revenues in the Road Fund versus expenditures.
Uh yes, this is the revenues we will actually bring in, FEMA will be sending us three hundred and that is, they pay seventy-five percent, the state pays twelve percent and we cover thirteen percent. So we will get from FEMA for the federal portion, three hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Your next line item, uh Bridge Emergency State Reimbursement. Uh we have budgeted two hundred and nine thousand four hundred and eight dollars to come in for for this next year. As you can see, um we had zero budgeted in, I've looked for last year, but we had several projects that come about throughout the year. We ended up getting four hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars in for those projects. Of course, we spent it out on on the expenditure side. Uh but next year, the FEMA State Reimbursement will uh be fifty-five thousand four hundred and eight dollars. And the projects that we know we're going to have is a hundred and fifty-four thousand. So we should bring in two hundred and nine thousand four hundred and eight dollars from the state between those two all those projects, the FEMA project and the other state projects, we have emergency fund. Then if you go down to our Flex Funding, it is at three hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. And it last year it was at two hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred and three. The Truck License Distribution, which is set by the state, went from two hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and one dollars down to two hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy. The Driver's License Refund, uh we increased from seventy-five hundred to eight thousand. County Road Aid, we had originally received an agreement probably a month, two months ago. They red they redid those agreements last week and sent us out new numbers. Um last year it was one million four hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty. This year it's one million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars, that's a decrease of a hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Glenn, I want to talk about that just a little bit too, how our funding comes in for that because uh if fuel prices continue to uh either stay the same, you know, with this dollar fifty, dollar forty, whatever whatever it is um or it goes down, then actually that amount could even be less. Because I think they give us maybe sixty percent kinda at the start of the fiscal year and then there's a couple of other checks that sort of come across towards the end of the year, is that correct? Can you kind of explain that please?
Yes, we will receive a check in August for sixty percent of that one million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand two fourteen in January we'll receive uh thirty percent and then later on in the year we'll like in May we'll receive the other ten percent.
But but that other ten percent, that thirty percent could change and not, it could not equal this two point or one point two nine nine, so um so we have to really sort of be somewhat careful and be paying close attention to that this next fiscal year um because that amount could even be less.
Yes. And Municipal Road Aid, the next line item is the same way, um it dropped from a hundred and forty-one thousand two eighty-four down to one hundred and thirty-two thousand thirty-nine dollars. And it's it's in this based on the same same thing on the gas. Uh the County Fleet Vehicle Repairs remain the same at a hundred and forty thousand and that's where we work on other entities' vehicles. Um and they pay us for that, so that's where the money comes in of a hundred and forty thousand. Uh County Mowing, um if you remember the general fund, um we had a county mo- mowing um for the animal shelter and for county parks. Those combined together um is the twenty-five thousand and it remained the same. Road Reimbursements, um it actually was at five thousand this year and remains at five thousand. We did receive in this year, as you can see, we received forty-one thousand nine twenty-five ninety. One payment on a road that was between us and City of Berea, City of Berea paid us for half of that and it was thirty-eight thousand one ninety-two, that's a one-time event. So we did keep it at five thousand. Interest Earned went from five hundred down to two hundred and fifty. Surplus from prior year, we kept at two hundred thousand. And uh the Truck Bond Sale Proceeds that um we no longer need that line item that was in last year's budget. Transfers from other funds, which this is from the general fund, remain the same at nine hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Does anybody have any question? That's a uh a decrease in total budget of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and nine. If not, we'll go over to the expenditures for the Road Fund. Road Supervisor Salary remained the same, sixty-seven thousand three eighty-six. Office Staff remaining is actually went from thirty thousand five sixty-four down to twenty-nine thousand four thirty-two. The Road Administrator uh went from sixty thousand two forty-five, it is remained the same at sixty thousand two forty-five. The Service Parts Manager uh forty-five thousand three sixty down to forty-three thousand six eighty. The Foreman went from fifty-four thousand down to fifty-two thousand. Assistant Foreman's a hundred and twenty-five thousand seven fifty-six to a hundred and twenty-one oh ninety-eight. Light Duty Mechanic thirty-seven thousand six ninety-two down to thirty-six thousand two ninety-six. Medium Duty Mechanic from fifty thousand four thirty-six down to forty-eight thousand fifty-five sixty-eight. Heavy Duty Mechanic fifty-two thousand eight twelve down to fifty thousand eight fifty-six. Heavy Equipment Operators from a hundred and eleven thousand one thirty-two down to a hundred and four thousand nine thirty-six. Light Equipment Operators from a hundred and seventy-three thousand sixteen dollars down to a hundred and sixty-two thousand four forty-eight. Truck Drivers Laborers went from two hundred and twelve thousand three twenty-eight down to two hundred and four thousand four sixty-four. Overtime Provisions remain the same at seventy-five thousand. Seasonal Workers decreased from sixty thousand down to forty thousand. Bridge Emergency Repairs um went from a hundred thousand up to a hundred and forty thousand. And that is where we will spend out that emergency money that I have on the other side coming in, the eighty percent coming in. Uh Contracted Surveying, we kept the same at five thousand. Medical Supply is the same at a thousand. Oh, we did take out the Dumpster Service, um we no longer need that and so that took out twenty-five hundred. Asphalt Resurfacing, um we remain the same at four twenty-five, I know it says four seventy-five there, but we've transferred money in, it remains the same at four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Asphalt Flex Funding went from two hundred and ninety-five thousand three oh three to three oh three hundred three thousand three fifty-five. Asphalt Packing remain the same.
Glenn, I do want to make reference to that, y'all remember when uh Casey and Kyle were on our fiscal court meeting last Tuesday? That um that could see a twenty-five percent decline. Um so just remember that as we, you know, get into this next fiscal year due to the fuels tax, thank you.
Uh Discretionaries, Asphalt Discretionary Funds, we actually um spent out three hundred and eighty-three thousand six or three hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventeen cents this year. We have zero discretionary funds that we know of that will be coming in or going out for next year. Projects, if we do get a project, we will budget amended. Concrete went from twenty-two thousand five hundred down to twenty. Erosion Control Supplies went from five thousand to ten thousand. Rock Number Twenty-three remained the same at five thousand. Rock Crush Base same at fifteen, Rock Number Nine same twenty-five hundred, Rock Number Fifty-seven the same at five thousand. Rock DGA the same at thirty-five thousand. Rock Rip Wrap same at fifteen thousand. Diesel Fuel Number Two uh decreased from fifty thousand down to forty thousand. Diesel Fuel for Off-Road remain the same at twenty-five thousand. Bulk Oil and Grease decreased from fifteen thousand down to ten thousand. Salt, we remain the same at two hundred thousand. I know it says thirty-nine thousand nine forty-six, but that's where we've transferred money out of that line item to other lineups. So it will remain the same at two hundred thousand. Garage Supplies remains the same at fifteen thousand. Gasoline decreased from forty-five thousand down to forty. General Construction Materials decreased from fifteen thousand down to ten thousand. Equipment Parts decreased from sixty-five thousand down to fifty thousand. Motor Vehicle Parts for Heavy Trucks decreased from seventy-five thousand down to fifty thousand. Motor Vehicle Parts Light Medium Trucks decreased from thirty-five thousand down to twenty thousand. Parts Fleet Vehicles, this is the parts that we use on the vehicles that we uh charge other entities to work on, remains the same at eighty thousand. Office Supplies remains the same at three thousand, Safety Gear remains the same at five thousand. Pipe and Culverts dropped from forty-five five thousand to forty thousand. Signs remain the same at twelve five. Tools remain the same at two thousand. Equipment Tires and Tubes remain the same at fifteen thousand. Truck Tires and Tubes dropped from twenty-five thousand to twenty thousand. Uniforms dropped from fourteen thousand down to ten thousand. Road Travel and Training dropped from ten thousand down to five thousand. The Road North, the Water Sewer went from seventeen hundred and fifty dollars to two thousand. The Road South Water Sewer remained the same at a thousand. North Electric remained the same at fourteen thousand, South Electric remained the same at five thousand. North Natural Gas same at ten thousand, South Natural Gas the same at four thousand. Uh Road North Repairs remain the same at three thousand. Road South Repairs for same remain the same at three thousand. Radio Communications Equipment same at fifteen hundred. Road Equipment Purchase, um this year we had spent a hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and three dollars seventy-eight cents. Next year, Road Purchase, uh Equipment Purchase is fifty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh we do have a line item in here for FEMA, um this is for the FEMA Project, the total that we're going to spend out is four hundred and one thousand seven hundred and three dollars. Um the next line item was the Dump Trucks, which has been eliminated, so that is no longer in the budget. Uh Reserve for Transfers remains the same at twenty thousand. Now, it says three hundred and fourteen thousand one seventy-five, that's because we budget amended the other amount into that reserve. Uh Social Security Match went from seventy-one thousand six fifty-six down to sixty-seven thousand nine seventy-eight. Retirement County Match went from two hundred and sixty-three thousand six thirty-two down to two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Life Insurance the same at eighteen hundred, Health Insurance the same at a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And Medicare went from sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars to fifteen thousand eight ninety-eight. Does anybody have any questions about the Road Fund? Hey, if not, we'll move into the Jail Fund. Start out with the Revenues. The State Jail Allotment, which is sent to us at the beginning of each year, remain the same at a hundred and eighty thousand. Court Cost Collections went from twenty-two thousand to twenty-six thousand. The Contract with SSA, which is the Social Security Administration, went from twenty thousand down to eighteen thousand. State Prisoners went from six hundred and fifty thousand income down to five hundred and fifty thousand. DUI Fees remain the same at twelve thousand. Miscellaneous remain the same at five hundred. Law Enforcement Supplement remain the same at seven thousand. Local Corrections Assistance went from sixty-five thousand to seventy-four thousand five ninety-six. Work Release went from a thousand to twelve hundred. Jail Housing Fees went from fifty thousand to sixty thousand. Home Incarceration Fees stayed the same at forty thousand. Jail Bond Collection Fees stayed the same at a hundred dollars. Booking Fees went from a hundred and twelve thousand down to a hundred thousand. Medical Fees went from eight thousand down to two thousand. Jail Telephone Commissions went from a hundred and twenty-five thousand up to a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And Jail Commissary Reimbursements went from two hundred thousand down to zero. And this uh line item is where we get reimbursed for the commissary employee. We have not been reimbursed this year yet, we will get reimbursed for it and it'll be approximately fifty thousand. Uh I believe Steve is no longer going to use that person as a commissary employee, so we will not have that coming in for next year. Also, in the past, we've had uh the commissary has given us quarterly amounts of uh income that they've had to help supplement the jail budget, we are no longer getting those. Uh County Attorney Traffic School Fees went from four thousand to forty-eight hundred. Interest Earned the same at a hundred dollars. Surplus from prior years, uh last year it was a hundred thousand, this year it's going to be a hundred and forty-five thousand. This is what's sitting in your checking account on June thirtieth. Um it says four hundred and two four eighty-four, but because we um actually last year our surplus was more and we got to budget amend that in. The Renovations Bond Sale Proceeds, um to do some renovations that are needed at the jail is an income of six hundred thousand. Transfers from other funds, which would be from the general fund, went from two million five hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which we have transferred at this time every bit of that. Um it will go to two million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, that's a four hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollar increase. Does anybody have any questions about the revenues for the jail?
Uh Glenn, can you tell us how much of the uh commissary uh reimbursement went toward the um or any of the renovations?
No, I I don't have any access to the commissary account. Commissary Account is ran by the jailer.
Steve on?
Uh we've been using the commissary account to pay our medical bills, our outside medical bills where we take inmates to the hospitals and different doctor appointments. And actually that was a catch-up, we were had um outside medical bills that had been on the books for two or three years and we've used that money to catch those up and now we're basically even. And it's uh essentially using all of our commissary money to stay even with our medical outside medical bills.
It's hard to tell when you're looking at the uh budget both ways, just on the medical expenses of it on we we know that there's some amount of medical expenses that get reimbursed, but it's hard to tell where that is and what that amount is.
Well, we also uh in our, I will say, in our uh budget meetings, um we did identify uh and we're working to capitalize uh on making sure that we are getting our full reimbursements back from Department of Corrections on those uh medical um expenses uh per inmate, um and so I know we are working on that in in the moment right now um to get those reimbursements.
What is the, what is the six hundred thousand for renovations, what's that for?
Um Steve has been working on, I'll let Steve talk about it, he's got a list of 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 quotes and stuff he's gotten on. Um you know, we got bad heat and air units, we have plumbing problems over there. I'll let Steve reflect on all the different things that need to be uh renovated or fixed.
Larry, that's that's our big mechanical systems. Our heat and air units are are grossly wrong for the building, uh have been neglected for years. Uh our plumbing, um and especially our drain system is two hundred and something thousand estimate just to fix our drains in the building. Uh Electrical, our security features, as in our uh control unit that controls all of our electronic doors throughout the facility. It's a a building um fund that I've I've done an access or or a study of all of the mechanical systems in the building and this is accumulation of all of those.
Okay, uh Glenn, I had a question for you.
Yes.
But goes back a little bit, but I couldn't get my computer on, but uh can you tell me the difference in how much money we spend at the golf course and how much we bring in? Would you have that, I I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I I don't have it right in front of me right now, I can get that information to you. Um I had a report that I did back a few months ago, um and we had lost about two hundred and twenty thousand, I think.
For this calendar year?
I know, I I have not done up this calendar year yet.
Okay.
I would have to go back and look at that report, I hate to say, I mean, we're not bringing in as much as we're paying out, we know that, we know there's a loss. Uh we've always had.
Well, I know there was a loss, but I just wondered how close it was.
The uh that that was a year uh look back on that loss though Glenn, it was, it just might have been from you know, September to September, it might have been February to February or when you did it, yes.
Let me see if I can if I can find that report on my computer real quick. If you all want to discuss anything else, well.
Steve, have you have you begun the renovation on the drainage problem at the jail yet?
No, I haven't, John. Uh we're we're just still kinda putting band-aids on it and fixing it as we have an issue. But an overall fix of the whole problem, we we have had it um evaluated and had cameras run down it and all that kinda stuff. And we do have a um a a price range or an estimate, it was two hundred and twenty thousand just to fix the drains.
Is it because of age, Steve, or because of abuse from some of the inmates putting stuff down the drains or a combination of all?
Combination of both, but really the biggest problem is that the building has settled a lot. And of course, the all of our drain system is underneath our foundations. Foundations have settled and it's uh disconnected a lot of the drains. And might have been a poor design to start with, but those drains actually go under our uh control tower that's in the center of the building. And to fix any of those, we'd we'd either have to eliminate them and go around that tower or we'd have to eliminate them, so e- either way, it's really expensive to change it.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, I found the golf course um study in the, I did a comparison with the last four fiscal years. Uh fifteen, sixteen fiscal year, we lost two hundred and forty-seven thousand four seventy-three. Sixteen, seventeen, we lost three hundred thousand three twenty-five. Uh seventeen, eighteen, we lost a hundred ninety thousand eight hundred forty-four. And the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, we lost two hundred twenty-six thousand four eighty-two.
Okay, you you answered my question, I appreciate you looking that up.
No problem. Is there any other questions?
And and I will say that on that loss, that does not does not include our bond payment, correct, Glenna, or does it?
No, sir, no, sir, that is just operational costs.
Yeah, thank you.
There's not anything more on the jail revenues, we'll move on to the jail preparations. Uh the jailer salaries, I stated before, is set by the state and given in January, it went from a hundred and five thousand through fifty to a hundred and thirteen thousand five twenty-seven. Uh jail deputies, it went from eight hundred ninety-six thousand two twenty-five to nine hundred forty-seven thousand nine ninety-five. That is uh the major increase that is because we added four deputies after we had done the budget last year, we had approved that. So that was the, so they really, they're not getting any raises or anything like that, that's just those four positions added into it with their current employees. Um as you can see, the next line item, last year, we had called it assistant jailer and it was at fifty-five thousand. This year, it's uh called chief deputy and it's at sixty thousand. And that was approved, that name change was approved through uh last court. Home incarceration staff went from fifty-six thousand five hundred down to fifty thousand. Office manager went from fifty-two thousand eight thirty-four, fifty-two thousand nine eighty-six. Jail secretaries went from sixty-one thousand six forty-six down to sixty thousand nine twenty-two. Maintenance staff went from thirty-three thousand six seventy-four down to thirty-two thousand seven hundred. And in all these line items, I not only have to budget for their regular hours, but because jail is twenty-four seven, I have to budget in their holiday. They are paid for their holidays as we uh as we occur, as the holidays occur, they are paid for those holidays on top. So I do have to not only budget for their eighty hours, but I have to budget for their holiday hours that they get paid on on top of that. Uh jail overtime this past year was uh budgeted for a hundred and ten thousand, we've already spent a hundred fifty-five thousand five eighty-eight. Uh we changed it to a hundred and fifty thousand. Part-time personnel was at ninety thousand, we've spent a hundred and one eight thirty-nine, but we left it at ninety thousand, Steve's gonna work on keeping that part-time down low.
Glenna, can I ask about the uh about the uh jail overtime? How much, how much of of an offset was there due to the addition of adding the four deputies last year? So with four four deputies last year brought us up to staffing, we shouldn't have had, we should have less, quite a bit less overtime, is that correct?
Uh, I wouldn't quote, but you could ask Steve that question.
Yeah, so actually what happened to the the four staff that's um was approved, had we filled all those positions, I really had to struggle keeping positions filled. I've never had all of our vacancies filled. By the time we get one filled, we've already lost two or three. So it's it's a struggle and then therefore if we lose somebody off the shift, I have to replace that with an overtime.
Thank you.
I do think that we're closer to being fully staffed um now than we have been in a long time. So if we can obtain, keep those employees, I I do think um they're they're gonna do better on their overtime.
Well, and also our reduced count for right now has really made a difference in our staffing levels. Uh we still carrying some vacancies, but because of our reduced count, that's not an issue right now.
Um the next one is the next page, jailer training incentive. Uh went from one thousand fifty-four dollars to twenty-two hundred, like I said, that's set by DLG. Excuse me. IT support is eleven thousand eight sixty-eight, same as last year. Building repair and maintenance, the same at a hundred thousand, equipment repair and maintenance, the same at a hundred thousand. Contractual medical services stayed the same at four hundred twenty-five thousand. Dumpster service remained the same at forty-five hundred. Contracted inmate housing, last year, we had budgeted four hundred thousand, but we paid out six hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Uh we do, because of the counts being down, um we do wanna increase it to five hundred thousand. Um but we we don't foresee, hopefully, if the numbers can stay um at a reasonable area, that we'll need that as much as we have this year.
Does Steve think that on the uh when we do uh the renovation parts over in the jail, will that number be affected by that?
I'm not understanding the question, Tom.
Will you have to move people out of the jail to do renovations?
Not with the count the way it is, right now, I can actually empty a cell and move inmates around. If we go back to the counts that we had a few months ago, up in the four hundred range, then yes, I would have to move inmates out.
Good, let's hope it stays down.
You bet.
Uh custodial supplies um went fifty-four thousand to fifty-five thousand. Contracted food service remained the same at four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Fuel remained the same at twelve thousand. Vehicle repairs uh increased from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. Office supplies remained the same at a thousand. Home incarceration monitors and supplies went from sixty thousand to seventy thousand. Um we're having more people on home incarceration. Staff uniforms went from three thousand to five thousand. Jail insurance claims remain the same at a hundred. Routine medical remain the same at a thousand. Jail association dues the same at eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Jail staff training increased from seven thousand to ten thousand. Telephone remained the same at thirty-two hundred. Staff travel expense, the same at five hundred. Water sewer, the same at a hundred and thirteen thousand. Electric increased from seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand. Natural gas stayed the same at twenty thousand. IT equipment, we decreased from ten thousand down to a thousand. Uh jail jail maintenance, repairs and renovations, uh that's a new line item for that six hundred thousand. So it's a wash, it's coming in through the bond and going out through this line item. The jail public bond remained the same at a thousand. Reserve for transfer remained the same at twenty thousand, you will see two hundred twenty-five thousand four eighty-four in there and that's because we budget amended uh money into that line item. Social security um went from ninety-six thousand five thirty-eight to ninety-six thousand seven forty-one. Retirement went from three hundred fifty-two thousand nine seventy-six to three hundred fifty-three thousand seven sixty-two. Life insurance went from two thousand five twenty to two thousand five eighty-three. Health insurance remained the same at two hundred sixty-four thousand. And Medicare match uh twenty-two thousand five seventy-seven to twenty-two thousand six twenty-five. Does anybody have any questions about the expenditures on the jail? Okay, if not, we'll move to the LGA fund. The LGA is the Local Government Economic Assistance Fund. Um we receive that through our mineral severance tax that we receive quarterly from the state. That money can only be spent on the roads, road projects, roads, equipment, that's all it can be spent on. This year.
Go ahead, Glenn, go ahead, go ahead.
Um this year, we have not spent out any, the last couple of years, actually, we have been building up the fund. Uh but this is where we will have paid for the uh payment for the dump trucks, because it has to be spent on road. So for the revenues, uh we do not have a coal impact tax. We do have a mineral severance tax, it increased from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. And our surplus from prior year has increased from five hundred thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand. On the expenditure side, uh road equipment, we had two hundred and thirty-six thousand in there, we have not spent any of that. Um and we have it at two hundred and fifty thousand for next year. Road materials, we had it three hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred, we did not spend any. We have road materials for four hundred fifteen thousand seven forty-eight for next year. The road equipment bond principal is for next year will be a hundred and nine thousand. The road equipment bond interest is um twenty-five thousand, it was fourteen thousand eight hundred, but actually, we're not gonna have our first payment till next year, so we have not spent any out of that. Twenty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-two and that is for the ten dump trucks that we bought last year for the one million. It actually uh was one million two hundred twenty-eight thousand, it come in at a million one hundred seventy-six thousand, that's what we spent. So our total budget um for the LGA is increasing from six hundred and forty thousand five hundred to eight hundred thousand five hundred for next year. Does anybody have any questions about LGA monies? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the CDVG. This is federal grant money. As you can see on the revenue side, federal grants, this past year, um we have seven hundred eighty thousand. Um and this next year is gonna be seven hundred twenty-one thousand four seventy-five. The two projects, when you look at the expenditures, is the food bank building project. Uh the total project was three hundred thousand, we've spent out um, we're currently paying some bills right now, so it's gonna be a little bit more than this. Um so we budgeted down to two hundred forty-one thousand four seventy-five. And and we may be uh spend out more before June thirtieth, so we may not spend out that much, but that's the worst-case scenario that we need to carry over. Kit Carson workforce CDVG project is four hundred eighty thousand, we have not spent out anything, don't proceed to um until next year, so it continues to be four hundred eighty thousand. Does anybody have any questions about the CDVG projects? That is a complete pass-through. All right, uh next will be the CSEP fund. You look at the revenues for the CSEP fund, our main revenue line item is the homeland security grants. Um last year, it was forty-eight million six hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. This year, it's forty-one million four hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. Jumped down to cell tower rent, um last year was sixteen thousand six sixty-one, this year is seventeen thousand. CSEP interest, we lowered from five hundred down to two fifty. Um surplus from prior year, we kept at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that's all of our revenues for the CSEP fund. Uh CSEP staff salaries went from three million five oh three eight fifty-eight down to one million nine sixty-nine four sixty-nine. And just to let you know, all of these numbers come straight from our CSEP budget. So Jennifer, she gives me all the numbers. In our budget, we have to combine all years that have monies. So we may have a project from two thousand fifteen that still has money left in it and it was a CSEP budget for two thousand fifteen. I have to combine that monies with any monies we have from fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. So when we do this, our budget, it's gonna be as if we had spent every dime that's available. We're never gonna do that, that's why most of the times when I hear my reports, we've only spent like eleven percent of the CSEP budget. We're not gonna spend all it, but we have to budget for it as if we could possibly. Um the fringe benefits for the CSEP staff went from nine forty-eight one oh three to five eleven two seventy-seven. CSEP program support um stayed the same at three hundred seventy-five thousand. The siren maintenance project went from a hundred ninety-four thousand six seven to a hundred fourteen thousand two eighty. The CSEP calendar went from two hundred fifty thousand eight oh one down to a hundred thirty-eight thousand three sixty-seven. The eight hundred megahertz service contract went from one billion two sixty-four seven hundred fifty-three dollars down to six hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Radio tower maintenance went from two hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars down to two hundred nine thousand six hundred and thirty. Hardware and software maintenance went from two hundred three thousand one hundred nineteen dollars to one hundred and sixty-seven thousand two sixty-four. Public affairs initiatives went from four hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars down to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars. Siren system batteries remain the same at seventy-five thousand. AAR system replacement went from four thou- four million five hundred thousand down to three million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Uh the siren expansion replacement went from two million, it actually remained the same at two million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand. The eight hundred megahertz replacement went from eleven million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars down to eleven million eight hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars. Generator replacement same, remained the same at two hundred fifty thousand. Anode stockpile went from four hundred fifty thousand down to three hundred thirteen thousand six sixty. The AAR and siren computers remain the same at thirty thousand. Radio tower replacement went from eighty thousand one seventy-eight down to three thousand four hundred and five. Tower site enhancements, HVAC generator uh UPS went from one hundred fifty-three thousand four twenty-three down to fifty thousand. The state CSEP contract contracted services, which is passed through from our state, not from FEMA, went from seventy-five thousand down to twenty-five thousand. The office supplies and miscellaneous um office services went from a hundred and fifty-three thousand two thirty-eight to ninety-six thousand three twenty-three. Fuel for generators went from twenty-three thousand six oh eight to nineteen thousand three seventy-seven. Exercise supplies and printing costs went from nineteen thousand three forty-one to fourteen thousand six fifty. Decon capabilities uh for the Zoom row stations went from eight thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars to zero. Community protective action went from two million two hundred thirty thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars down to one million sixty-one thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. CSEP training went from three hundred three thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars to one hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars. EOC cost went from one million one hundred eighty thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars to seven hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-four. JIC operating expense and maintenance went from three hundred twenty-seven thousand six thirty-two down to two hundred fifteen thousand one thirty-six. The EOC roof walls and maintenance remain the same at seventy-five thousand.
And Glenna?
Yes.
What what do you think that would attribute to the uh such a a drop in the community protective actions?
I think it's projects that uh that we've worked on, that we've completed and that's the reason it drops down.
Dustin, Dustin, do you have, Dustin's on here, Glenna, Dustin, do you have anything you wanna add to that or Jennifer, I'm not sure if Jennifer's on here, but.
Jennifer's not on, but yes, that's exactly what it is, we had some projects lined up from years past. Uh as Glenna has stated correctly, this is a culmination, the this budget from the county side is a culmination of multiple years. Uh at the CSEP office, we have to keep it all separate, uh Glenna has to bring it all into one. So as we uh we just deployed those uh uh shelter and place kits here in the last uh what, six months, that is why you've seen the decrease in that line.
Are you good, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Dustin.
The next one is medical request, uh, six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars to four hundred ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. First responder training cost offset went from thirty thousand to twenty thousand. Emergency response accountability system remained the same at eighty thousand. E O C repairs uh, went from two million to two million, two hundred thousand. C C E P travel, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars down to one hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. E O C utility costs went from four hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars down to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three. The decon Zoom row trailer maintenance, um, we got rid of that line item. It was twenty-two thousand, five dollars. It's now zero. The computer servers uh, went from three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five dollars down to twenty-six thousand, one eighty-three. Additional handheld radios and supplies went from one forty-two, that, a hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars down to a hundred and forty thousand. The next page, the jet fed response info systems went from ninety-six thousand, seven fifty-nine down to fifty thousand. The auto call down reverse nine-one-one support uh, remains the same at sixty-nine, five. The monitoring equipment for off post went from three hundred forty thousand, seven fifty-five down to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The protective action equipment went from eighty thousand down to two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. The equipment for community preparedness remains the same at a hundred and fifty thousand. Phase two eight hundred megahertz replacement remains the same at five million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. The phase three remains the same at four million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine. Social Security match went from two hundred and seventeen thousand, two thirty-nine down to a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one oh eight. Retirement match went from eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eighty-two dollars down to four hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Life insurance went from eighteen hundred down to sixteen hundred. Health insurance remained the same at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred. And Medicare county match went from fifty thousand, eight hundred and five down to twenty-eight thousand, five fifty-eight. Does anybody have any questions about the C C E P fund? Okay, if not, we'll move into the nine-one-one fund. Uh, we'll start with the revenues. Uh, the E nine-one-one telephone tax remains the same at six hundred thousand. The cell phone receipts remain the same at three hundred and fifty thousand. The fiscal court operational support um, went up by three thousand, a hundred eighty-one thousand, nine seventy-three to a hundred eighty-four thousand, three oh eight. Same for the city of Richmond and city of Maria. Then you run down to the project support. It decreased by fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. It went from sixty-six thousand, one ninety-two down to eleven thousand for all three entities. The nine-one-one interest um, went from two hundred and fifty dollars to a forty-eight. The surplus from prior year went from five hundred thousand down to four hundred thousand. They have no transfers technically from other funds. They get um, income from other entities.
And Glenn, I do want to make a reference and uh, make known that E M S is also a partner in with us when nine-one-one.
Yes.
Yeah, E M S, uh, they're, they're not an equal partner, but, but from a financial standpoint, uh, but they do give forty thousand a year towards uh, nine-one-one as well. So we appreciate the E M S board and we appreciate Carlos.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Um, the, the appropriations for the nine-one-one fund. The dispatchers um, went from one million, thirty-seven thousand, three twenty-five down to nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, part of that is due to the twenty-seven payrolls that we had to budget for for this year. But also part of it's through attrition. We've lost a lot of um, dispatchers that had been here a while that were making more money than the entry level. So we have a lot of entry level in there now. Overtime remained the same at seventy-five thousand. The accounting one percent admin fee remained the same at twenty-five thousand. I T support remained the same at thirty thousand. G I S support same at five thousand. Computer software maintenance went from one twenty, a hundred twenty-seven thousand, six fifty-two to a hundred and sixty thousand, six fifty-two. The building maintenance and repairs remain the same at a thousand. The new hire and medical testing went down from four thousand to three thousand. Custodial supplies remained the same at eighteen hundred. Office supplies the same at forty-five hundred. Uniforms the same at five thousand. Educational supplies the same at six hundred. Property liability insurance the same at nine thousand, three twelve. Accreditation fees the same at two thousand. Reimbursements the same at five hundred. E nine-one-one cell phones went from seven twenty down to three sixty. They went from two down to one. Telenet working database costs uh, went from seventy thousand up to eighty-nine thousand. Training and travel went from sixteen thousand down to fifteen thousand. The internet went from fifty-four hundred up to sixty-four hundred. Water and sewer remain the same at five hundred. Electric increased from five thousand to fifty-five hundred. Natural gas stayed the same at seven hundred. Coffee or maintenance the same at three thousand. Miscellaneous the same at five hundred. Um, nine-one-one equipment uh, went from forty-five thousand down to twenty thousand. Capital projects for the nine-one-one went from a hundred ninety-eight thousand, five seventy-five down to thirty-three thousand. Reserve for transfer remained the same at twenty thousand. Social Security went from sixty-nine thousand, nine ninety-eight down to sixty-three thousand, eight forty-three. Retirement match went from two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six twenty-five down to two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven fifty. Life insurance went from sixteen hundred and thirty-eight dollars down to fifteen seventy-five. Health insurance uh, went from one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred down to a hint, a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Unemployment insurance, five thousand down to four thousand, three forty. Workers' comp insurance, uh, seven thousand, eight hundred down to six thousand, six ninety-four. And Medicare went from seventeen thousand down to fourteen thousand, nine thirty-one. Does anybody have any questions about the expenditures for the nine-one-one fund? Okay, if not, we'll go into our last fund, which is our health insurance account. Um, this is where we are self-insured. If you look at the revenues, um, each payroll, um, we put five hundred and fifty dollars into this account for each person that's on our health insurance. Also, the other entities that are on our health insurance, which would be the clerk, the sheriff, the Mass Cal Utility District, the Southern Madison Water District, and the Madison County Conservation District also pay us five hundred and fifty dollars for each one of their employees that is on the, on the plan. So each month that money is put into this health insurance fund, and we pay our claims out of this fund. Um, our health insurance fund, um, the health insurance reimbursements, which would be the income coming in, uh, last year was one million, six hundred and eighty thousand. This year one million, seven hundred and forty thousand. Surplus from prior year went from four hundred thousand last year to seven hundred thousand this year, as we continue to grow this account. And if you look on the last page, um, air estimated, last year I did not break out into reserve. But this year I thought it would be good since our reserve is getting built up more. Last year I had the total amount of two million, eighty thousand under self-insured health insurance account, which all claims come out of that account. Um, but this year our estimated claims, uh, according to our usage so far, um, we estimate that our claims will run one million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars, which leaves us a reserve of nine million, six hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. You know, if our claims.
Hey Glenn, Glenn, read that number again. It won't be nine million, I don't think.
Oh, nine hundred, I'm sorry, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. I wish it was nine million. So together, um, if, if we was to go over those estimated claims, say we, we spent, uh, our claims was one million, six hundred thousand, we would transfer from the reserve for transfer down to that line item to pay those. But it just kind of breaks it out so you can see how we stand so far. Does anybody have any questions about our self-insured health insurance fund?
Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the uh, the review. Uh, appreciate your knowledge of the budget and the past budgets. Um, so I appreciate your experience a lot. Um, if there is any questions, um, if there is any concerns that either the magistrate, fiscal court members have or our department heads that have been listening as well, um, please send out an email to Glenn, uh, C C me in it, please, if you do not mind. Um, so that we can look at those potential changes, or uh, if you didn't see something in there that was quite right, uh, that we can make those changes before the first reading. Uh, our plan is to have the first reading of our budget uh, coming up this next Tuesday, uh, which is our next regular scheduled fiscal court meeting. Um, uh, and I do have a few things that I want to uh, bring up. Chris, Glenn is here, and he didn't remember hearing about the revenue on the Scott County agreement.
No, I, I didn't go over that in his budget meeting, so yes.
We will need to, we will need to look at that.
Anything possible to be associated with it.
Yeah, so maybe just jot that down for maybe a Zoom meeting or something, um, or a phone conversation uh, between now and I'm trying to get the budget done by Friday, so it can be up on Dropbox, the first reading. Um, and same goes to any of the other department heads, uh, it will be important. Um, if you saw anything that didn't quite look right, or might need to be changed, and then as always, magistrates, we will, uh, if we do make changes, we will um, announce those changes from today's workshop um, to the uh, fir- to the first reading. So we'll announce those to you all, so you all know what changes have been made.
Judge, I, I'd just like to say that Glenn was nice enough to uh, go over the budget for approximately an hour with me yesterday and asked us some questions. I had some concerns about, and, and I appreciate her doing that, and uh, we'll, we'll be looking at it further from here, but uh, you know, it, it looks pretty solid from what, what I can see. Uh, so, uh, I appreciate all the inputs from everyone.
And we will appreciate that, John. We, we will have to still be a little conservative, um, uh, with this pandemic, the coronavirus. Uh, you know, a lot of this is still unknown. Um, and so we will have to uh, um, e- even some of these line items, we're going to be con- continue to be very conservative and make sure that we're going to have enough money at the end of the year to, to pay for those things, so.
Absolutely.
Um, is there any other comments or anything about the budget? This is a special call meeting, so we won't actually have magistrate comments or judge comments like normal. Um, is there any other comments about the bu- go ahead, Larry.
Uh, have we, uh, I know this is not on the agenda, or I know it's for the budget, but have we received any bids on the land we got to sell?
No, Larry, due to the COVID-nineteen, uh, we've had to put that on hold. Um, we, we, we did, uh, we did have it scheduled for a fir- a few of those first properties. Um, but it was right when all that started, and you had to be social distances, and uh, we, we'd had an open house, nobody showed up. Um, and so we felt like that it was best to uh, just ho- hold off uh, for right now with all that going on, so.
I know that wasn't, wasn't supposed to discuss it enough, but I just wanted, I was just curious.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. Um, but, so I do want to make an announcement um, to the public that's watching, uh, or that will be watching. Uh, we do appreciate everybody's engagement and watching uh, any of our meetings that we have. But there will be a copy of the proposed budget. Uh, it will be on um, our website. Uh, and it will be available after the first reading of the ordinance, which is going to be twenty-twelve. Uh, and our website is W W W dot Madison County K Y dot U S. And it's under the transparency tab. Um, so anybody that would want to go and look at our budget, uh, between the first reading and the second reading, uh, will have that opportunity to do so. That will be on our website. Uh, do want to announce that our next fiscal court meeting will be next Tuesday, which will be May the twelfth, twenty-twenty, uh, and it will be right back here on Zoom. Um, and, and we have been um, sort of scheduling that at nine to get everybody on and to make sure that there's no technical difficulties. But our fiscal court meeting will actually start live at nine-thirty, just like any normal fiscal court meeting uh, time. So again, that's May twelfth, twenty-twenty at nine-thirty. Uh, we will be live back here on Zoom, um, for our regular scheduled fiscal court meeting. Um, and as we adjourn, uh, I do want to make an announcement, uh, or just really more of a comment. Um, sorry, somebody made a chat here. Uh, I do want to, just everybody remember the Don Richardson family. Don, um, man was a wonderful community member. Man, he touched a lot of lives, a lot of service to the Madison County, uh, to young people in the, in the coaching industry with baseball and basketball, even across the state. Um, so, so we, we lost a great person, uh, and one that touched a lot of lives uh, here, here in the last few days. So, uh, remember their family. I have nothing else. If there is nothing else, uh, I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
Shall move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by John Tudor and a second by Larry Combs. All in favor, Clerk Barger, if you will, please call the roll.
Master Combs?
Yes.
Master Tudor?
Yes.
Master Bucking?
Yes.
Good sailor.
Yes.